Good evening. Welcome to this, the June 12th meeting of Livermore City Council called meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Barrientos.
President.
Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kig.
Here. Mayor Marshon.
Here. You'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever created and eternal.
Thank you. Was there a report for the action taken in closed session?
There were no reportable actions.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to reorder the agenda in case anybody wishes to speak on the item. Item six point three, which is on the Greenville Community Charging Depot, is going to be moved to the beginning of the public hearings, six point one. So just heads up on that. With that, we'll be moving into proclamations and presentations. Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, this is our annual update. This will be presented by Chair Zhang and Vice Chair Sidhu. You're welcome.
Honorable Mayor Marshon and members of the city council, we're just waiting for the presentation to be loaded. Thank you for your patience.
To me.
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Michael Jong. I'm the chair for the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission. And next to me is Ajave Sidhu. He's the vice chair. And tonight we'll be presenting our annual update. Next slide. So first off, our duties and responsibilities. So our primary goal and objective is to promote youth involvement in our city. So we do this by creating avenues for interest and forums for our youth to actively participate in our city and voice their opinions. We've done this in the past, first and foremost, by sending proposals. For example, I believe we sent a proposal to the city council in the past to provide more recycling bins around the downtown area. And in addition, we've held polls around Livermore and Granada High School. Next slide.
You also did great work on an anti-bullying campaign that we collaborated on. So you've done like great work in the community. Also a United Nations program that you put together. So you're doing some really great work in the community.
Thank you.
We hold our review at the Livermore Community Center at the first Monday of each month at seven. At seven PM. Our commission is made of our three wonderful staff liaisons. We have fifteen youth members and three adult non-voting members for a total of eighteen members who each serve two year terms. And then we have our list of our members up there. Next slide.
So our commission is split up into three active subcommittees, which are the Climate Change, Community Service, and Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, which each independently meet outside of our regular monthly meetings to develop projects and initiatives to bring back to our monthly meetings and hopefully start new projects to promote, once again, youth involvement in our city. So a couple of goals that we have planned for our next year are a cultural affair and media contest. So both of them are relatively new and in the making, so we haven't yet fully hashed out the details. But we have done a world cultural fair in the past before COVID, which, in which we had dancers and singers perform at the bankhead. Hundreds of people came. I think it was a pretty big success, which is why we wanted to do it again in the future. As for the media contest, once again, we have not hashed out the full details yet, but you can see on the slide over there. We have a Google form, a possible Google form that we're going to send to participants in case they want to apply for said competition. But that's all for next year. Next slide.
Throughout the last year, we've heard from representatives from the city plan update, the Livermore Climate Action Plan, Horizons Family Counseling, and LARPD, so we can provide relevant feedback on behalf of the Livermore youth. And the LARPD presentation led to us establishing volunteer days at like the different parks in Livermore. Next slide. Thank you for your time.
Great. Well, thank you. And are there any questions from the council? Well, again, you've put on some fantastic programs in the past, and I look forward to the future programs as well. And thank you for the time and effort that you put in to engage the youth, because that's, that's the next wave of leadership that we're going to have. So certainly appreciate you being so involved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Can I say a quick thing?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I've been to your seminar meeting. I'm not sure you noticed, I kind of hide in the corner. And I really appreciate that you take your time to go there. And Nathan, you do a nice job with the kids that watch the interaction, and it's real nice to see you guys work together. And get, you know, I appreciate you doing it and hope to encourage more activity. Do a job. Nice job.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Barrientos. Okay, so with that, thank you. Okay, on to item three point two. This is the presentation of the 2023 High School Senior Arts Awards. Do we have a presentation? I just roll with this. Okay, very good. So the High School Senior Arts Awards are designed to identify, recognize, and encourage Livermore's talented high school graduating students for their accomplishments in the arts. And this is near to, and dear to my heart, because I'm married to an artist. So the arts have been a very important part of my life. This year, the Commission for the Arts Award issued five awards, one at Del Valle High School, one at Granada High School, and three at Livermore High School. The award certificates were distributed to each graduate at their school awards ceremony. And tonight, I am pleased to present to them with their $600 check award. I'd like to acknowledge Bob Gaussman, the committee chair for the High School Senior Arts Awards. And also Kathleen Darren Ellis and Sherewallard, who's the committee member as well. The committee, commission members here. Oh, there we are. She's hiding over the corner there. So ask the, as I read your names, come forward. Okay, next we have a, oh, and by the way, Calvin Ray Schaller from Granada High School also was awarded, but he was not able to attend tonight. But I'd like to also acknowledge Calvin Ray Schaller from Granada High. Okay, next, moving on, for proclamation, item three point three, it's a proclamation declaring June 2023 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And I'll be presenting this to the president of Livermore Pride, David Hurst. Whereas the city of Livermore is a welcoming community and an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, raise a family. And whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles, including that every person is created equal, that they have rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that all shall be afforded the full recognition and protection of the law. And whereas the city of Livermore recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its residents and preventing discrimination, including on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas June has become a symbolic month in which the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community and their supporters come together in various celebrations, actively promoting the ideals of tolerance and acceptance and recognition of pride in who they are. And whereas the city of Livermore recognizes it is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents and workforce, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our city. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Livermore declares June 2023 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Livermore in recognition of the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and to support the principles of equality, liberty, and inclusion.
So on behalf of Livermore Pride, which is made up of members of the LGBTQ plus community, as well as youth and parents who support the youth in that community, as well as our business community and other allies in the community. We'd like to thank you for your commitment to inclusion and your support for diversity. And we'd also like to make sure that everybody saves the date for the third weekend of October, October 21st, for Livermore Pride 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Okay, moving on to the open forum. This is an opportunity to speak to the council on the item.
We have item three point four.
Oh, I'm looking, oh, I'm sorry. Item three point four. Information presentation regarding the 2022 Eastern Alameda County Human Services Needs Assessment. Thank you. This is important stuff. Sorry to rattle your cage there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Josh Thurman. I'm your Human Services Program Manager. And tonight we'll be providing an informational update on the 2022 Eastern Alameda County Human Services Needs Assessment. Just a very, very brief background, we conduct the needs assessment in the Tri-Valley with our partners in Dublin and Pleasanton roughly every ten years after the census comes out. And so we are at that ten-year mark, and so we're embarking upon a new needs assessment. And I want to introduce Becky Reno from JSI Research and Training Institute to provide you with a high-level overview of where they are in the process and what will come of it in the future.
Thank you. And thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. As I mentioned, as Josh had mentioned, my name is Becky Reno, and I am heading up the team at JSI that is conducting this needs assessment currently. And there are eight members of our team that are all working on various aspects of this. As I mentioned, I myself am heading it up. I have a co-director, Deanna Lewis, and then a number of different team members working on the quantitative and qualitative data collection. If you can go ahead and advance, I'll give you sort of the overview of our process and the timeline, what we're really centering in the work. I'll provide a really high-level overview of our findings so far. We're about a third of the way through data collection. And so we just wanted to give some opportunity to update you all on what we're seeing so far as we talk to community members and nonprofits. And then we'll open it up to any questions that you might have. So as I mentioned, this is our team. We have a really deep bench of expertise on our team to be able to work with both the quantitative and qualitative data to really be able to tell the story of what's happening in Dublin, Livermore, and Pleasanton. So this is, I realize the font is very small on this, but just wanted to give you a very high-level overview of our different activities in our timeline. So we started with a quantitative data collection, really looking to see what sort of story the data would tell us in terms of demographics, how these might be shifting over time, what some of the needs are that different residents might be facing. And then we've moved into our qualitative data collection. And this is where we're working really hard to really bring in the voices of a lot of our priority populations, which you'll see in a future slide. And going out into community, meeting with community members, and again, being able to sort of hear what's most pressing to them, especially as they think about needs and services. And then we're moving into a phase now, we're sort of midpoint data collection, and we'll be moving into data analysis and review. And this is where, again, we're going to be revisiting the quantitative data based on what we're hearing from just talking to people in the community through outreach events, through focus groups, interviews, et cetera. And then at the end, we will focus on a specific set of recommendations, as well as a set of recommended steps for an implementation plan. I wanted to touch on this very briefly, because our team is really deeply committed to making sure that we're doing all of this in an equitable way. We really believe that it is at the center of everything that we're doing and really is at the center of our ability to be able to really get it right. We are, we're located in Berkeley, so we're inherently outsiders. But even so, we're not receiving services in Dublin, Livermore, or Pleasanton. So everything that we are doing is really working on centering those voices and making sure that we're giving something back to people in the process. So there's long been, long been a process of sort of doing this work in ways that can be maybe extractive. We're really focusing on building capacity with community members as we do this work. And I'm happy to answer questions about what that might look like. So this is a picture of all the members of our steering committee. This has been a really thoughtful process that we did pretty early on to make sure that we had a lot of expertise in the room, not only for each of the respective cities, but for Alameda County as a whole. So these individuals come together about once a month, and we provide updates, we ask for assistance, ask for feedback on our findings and get some of that context, and we'll be really turning to this group as we look to recommendations as well. In addition, we have what we call the EPAC, the Eastern Alameda Power and Action Committee. And this is one of those mechanisms that we have to put equity in practice. So this is a set of community members that we have that we've been meeting with either monthly or bi-weekly that we've engaged to help us in data collection and to really think through, who are these priority populations? What are the needs that they're having? I just wrapped up yesterday. We did a in-person focus group in Dublin with three of the individuals on the EPAC. They led it, and I was there for support and note-taking, and it's been a really valuable process to have their input as we've gone through. These are the priority groups that we've heard in a number of different contexts. So this has really been at the center of who we're trying to reach when we do these data collection methods, be it interviews or focus groups. I welcome, of course, any input if you have other additions to this list. But it really focuses on those who might be most in need and/or those whose voices might not often be included because they're, you know, sort of quote-unquote "difficult to reach." So this has really been at the center of a lot of our outreach efforts. So I wanted to give you just a really high-level overview of some of the things that we've heard. This is sort of at the 20,000-foot level, and a lot of this you might be familiar with. I'm sure it's been reflected in other venues. But these are some of the things that we've heard so far. And really briefly, the mechanisms for data collection have been, we've talked to representatives from a number of different nonprofit groups. We've engaged with first responders in the community, recognizing that a lot of times they are the ones that are meeting those who are in crisis in the community. And then we are sort of in the midst of our interviews and focus groups with community members. So in our nonprofit focus group, we really heard a lot about the pandemic, as well as the need for collaboration between and across these organizations. Next slide. I'm going to go through these very quickly, because I know there's a need for time. These are the community needs that we've heard pretty strongly. Housing and services for unhoused people, food, including food security as well as food cost, the availability of mental health services, and not just for those who are low income, but also those who are sort of middle income as well, just the availability and affordability of mental health services. Different specialty health services, including dental and reproductive health needs. Service navigation, this has come up quite a bit, both with individuals as well as nonprofits. And that just means being aware of and being able to access different services that might be available around the Tri-Valley. A number of needs related to transportation. And then we've heard a lot about changing racial and ethnic demographics, including a need for services that are delivered in different languages. So this is our email, EANA@JSI.com, if anyone would like to reach us through that. We also have a website set up so that community members can access directly, including opting in for any of the data collection activities that we have, or just sort of hearing updates as we go. And that is at mytrivalley.org. You can also scan that QR code in order to see the website. So at this time, I'd like to welcome any questions and, yeah, just hear your feedback.
Vice Mayor Kig, your question?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Could you go back to the slide with the timeline? I know it's very difficult to read, but if you could just reiterate where you are specifically in the process right now, you're in qualitative data collection?
We are. We are in the qualitative data collection. We've done an initial quantitative data analysis, looking primarily at data through mysidewalk.org, which presents it in like a graphical format using GIS software. So that piece has already been wrapped up. We are doing the qualitative data collection and doing what's called an iterative analysis as we go. And that really just means that we're looking at themes as they emerge, so that if we need to ask any additional questions or if there's other priority populations we need to engage, we can do that. So we'll be in this phase, really sort of in a split between phase three and phase four, looking at data analysis and review by August.
Awesome. That's great. I, one of the best parts of being a council member is meeting cool people and knowing other cool people who do cool things. So I'm going to call you out, David. You're right here, who's from Livermore Pride and is also on the Health and Human Services Commission in Alameda County. So for LGBTQ populations, David might be a good person to reach out to for qualitative analysis. Sorry to put you on spot there, David, but I appreciate this. This is really interesting. And my other question is just, I know this comes after the census, and because the 2020 census took a long time to get data back, is that why we're looking by 2023, October, end of 2023, is we're getting this? Does this generally take a three-year cycle after the census? What's the general timeline for this? I know census this year was funky.
Yes, I don't know if you want to speak to the timing.
Yes, you are correct. It threw us our timeline off just a bit. And it's just, it takes a while to make sure we have a thorough review of all the data and make sure we engage each community in a meaningful way. So it just takes a little time to get it right.
Awesome. I look forward to seeing the result. Thank you for this. Thank you.
Councilmember Carling.
Thanks for the report. I assume that you'll be back at some point reporting to us and providing us the information. But the people that need it the most are the people that you're going to be interfacing with over the next few weeks and months. And so how do you ensure that they get the information that you've collected and are able to point them in the right direction to get the services they need?
That is a great question, and as a social worker, I love that question, because that's really at the core of what's really important to us at the end of the day is making sure that we're making recommendations that are grounded in their lived experiences and making sure that they get that information back, that we're not just collecting that and then, you know, letting it live on a report somewhere. So we're currently undergoing sort of a comparative analysis of looking at the other ways that communities have disseminated this kind of information. We have the website available now, and we've been working with Jay, Josh, and Sean to think through, what are the best ways of feeding this information back? On a very basic level, one of the things that we are doing is we have, of course, all the names and contact information of those who have participated and just keeping them abreast of what the findings are and hopefully providing them some information back about ways they can plug into the things. Because as you might imagine, we're getting people that are very passionate about the issues they're seeing in their community and are committed to working to address them. So wanting to make sure that we, we work with them and stay connected to them along the way is a priority.
Councilmember Barrientos?
How, you know, I was looking at siloed. How do you include other groups? Are they open to command or how do you reach out to them?
So we have, there's a number of different ways. Those individuals who are members of the Eastern Alameda Power and Action Committee, the EPAC, those individuals were selected because they're connected, very closely connected to their different communities. So they've been a huge resource in terms of getting the word out and getting people to focus groups. As we mentioned, the website is one mechanism. We've also attended a number of different community events and had tabling events where we have our information available. And we have large, sort of the sticky post-its that people can write on of what's a priority to them. Our steering committee has been really instrumental as well. They're connected to different agencies and different organizations, and they've been posting flyers there for us also. And then really word of mouth, some of our EPAC members have been posting on Nextdoor and different community forums, saying, hey, come out, get your voice heard, and helping us sort of reach out into their networks.
Councilmember Branning.
Thank you. So, yeah, first I want to say just you're doing great work. I really appreciate what you're doing. The needs assessment is a huge tool. As some people probably know, I was on the Alameda County Public Health Commission for a while. And so seeing the list of members you have on your advisory body is awesome. They're some of the smartest people I've ever met, I've seen on that list. Special shout out to Avette, she is, and Kimmy, of course. Both of them are amazing at public health and really doing incredible work there. So I just wanted to ask a couple of quick things, or point out one thing really quickly. So one of the things that we've seen come up in Livermore, and it comes up at the county as well, and kind of falls off the radar and then comes back continuously, is really on your needs. Sanitation is one thing. People who are unhoused often need access to sanitation in order to be able to get a job. And another thing on that, that has been a challenge here, and I'm sure in other areas, is safe storage. If a person has things and they go to work and they don't have a host with them, and it can be a real challenge. And not just things, that includes pets and children. And we've seen that come up over and over in Livermore. And I know the surrounding cities have as well. I imagine it's a problem throughout the county. And so I say that those are two things you might consider adding to your priority areas, especially for this area. And then my question for you really is, you know, you've got a great, we've got a great team here with Josh. He's been doing some awesome work. We're really lucky to have him. And we've got our own, you know, Human Services Commission here. You've got five members well-connected with the community here. We've got a staff that's very involved with our community. So going forward, my ask to you is to please keep us involved in the outreach and how we can spread the word, how we can help amplify and really try to reach some of the voices, especially some of the micro communities we have here that often get overlooked.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate that. And I'm sure we will take you up on that.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much. This, this is, this work is so incredibly important. When I was involved early on with the Tri Valley Anti-Poverty Collaborative, I had an opportunity to speak with someone from Alameda County. It was a service provider. And when they came out to the meeting, they said, oh, well, there's no poverty in the Tri Valley. Yeah, over the last number of forty percent are rent burdened. One in five is food insecure. And so yes, it's a state of chronic scarcity. So this, to dispel this misinformation, this, this preconceived notion that we're all a bunch of rich labbies out here. No, there's a, there's a wide range and a great need. So the work that you're doing is incredibly important. And I applaud the work that you're doing and I really look forward to seeing the results come back and, and seeing the fruits of those results bear. So great. Well, thank you very much. Any further questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking forward to this. All right, now we can go to item four point O. Thank you for your patience there. Okay, so Madam City Clerk, will you tell people how they can participate in the open forum?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate in person or remotely as noticed on the agenda. To provide comment in person, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chamber. Speakers will be announced in the order received. We will hear from members of the public who are in person first, followed by those wishing to speak over Zoom. To provide comment by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern or upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much. Do we have any cards? Or do we have anyone online that wishes to speak?
Yes, we do. Our first speaker is Keith Rothenberg, followed by John Stein.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, I wish to bring to your attention how the notification process for the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting regarding the proposed cell phone tower in Mojo Park appears from the public perspective. Some residents who live near the park received a public hearing notice on April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. I've attached that to the documents I submitted. It's this document here. Please note the tiny font used for this notice. This notice was received seven calendar days before the meeting with a note that the agenda documents, which describe the project, would not be available for public review until after four PM Friday, April fourteenth, for a meeting scheduled the following Tuesday, April eighteenth, a total of four days. I believe that this was the first notice to the public for this project, which dated documents in the agenda packet show has been in progress for more than five years. When questioned by the planning commissioners about the timing and format of the mailed notice, staff replied that it takes quite a bit of time and analysis to get a project packaged up and that notices mailed out ten days in advance meet the minimum notice period required by statute. Staff also stated that they are working with the city legal department on the format of this notice. Public experiences up to this point give the appearance of a process that discourages public input by not providing the public enough time to review or respond to matters of concern. In light of this experience, I would like to request that the council direct staff to do more than the minimum statute requirements for this appeal of this project, including confirm at its earliest convenience the current expected date for the public hearing for the appeal of this project. At the last city council meeting, Mayor Marshawn graciously stated that the appeal for this project is expected to be heard in September, twenty twenty-three. Fully describe the format for the public hearing, how much time for each party to speak, who will be allowed to address the council, will the project applicant AT&amp;T also be given time to address the council? Will the public be given time? Will there be back and forth discussion, Q and A, et cetera? Give a minimum of thirty days notice to the appeal applicant of any scheduled public hearing. Provide the staff report on this matter for public review, a minimum of thirty days prior to the public hearing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Stein, followed by Zoom speakers Alan Burnham and Donna Caban.
John Stein, thirteen thirty-four, Kathy Court. Because of COVID and telecommuting ridership on mass transit has dropped off significantly. There was an announcement today that there will be a one-year state bailout of $3.1 billion for mass transit, assuming that the governor doesn't blue pencil it. There needs to be a, a long-term solution for the revenue to replace the declining in ridership if we are to maintain mass transit. This is important to Livermore because a lot of our current projects are transit oriented. So at some point, we need to start looking at ways of financing the mass transit in our area. Some possibilities are an increase in sales tax, an increase in bridge tolls and road tolls, a mellow roos district or even cities' general funds. The effect on wheels and Valley Link may be significant, particularly since the makeup of the MTC and the various transit agencies is heavily weighted toward the central cities. So we do need to start planning now. And also looking at the effect on transit-oriented development. If mass transit becomes more limited, particularly in terms of traffic, parking and access to various services. So I would urge that you begin looking at various alternatives. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alan Burnham. Alan Burnham, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, hello, honorable counsel and mayor. You've probably noticed that of the, the letters that were submitted, several of them were quite concerned about East Avenue being reduced to one lane. I won't address that, but it does reach the overall question that I raised as to when the city is going to communicate more clearly what its plans are for East Avenue, given the experience they have. I asked a little over a month ago for the staff to direct, excuse me, for the council to direct staff to come back with an indication of what they learned and what the plan folder would be. They were too busy to do that and I understand they have a lot of stuff to do and I'll get back to that in a moment. But I, I would like to point out that I, I raised two questions, two issues where the there were safety. There was a yield, possession of yield sign that was actually impinging upon the roadway. And thanks to Paul Spence, that was fixed the next morning. The other is that the, the turn going south onto Hillcrest is not meet, is not wide enough to meet the minimum width of California vehicle code. I bring that up because I was going to my turn and all of a sudden somebody came in to turn left. And so I made a little bit sharper turn and I put a little scratch in the back fender of my car. Now I have a twelve-year-old car, it's got other scratches and dings, so I'm not really all that concerned about it. But I will leave you with the note that because the city actually is violating the California vehicle code, my car was damaged and I'm hoping that others will not happen. I, I do notice, did notice that the city did go through and, and replaced a lot of the bars that have been flattened because large vehicles can't get around. Not surprisingly, they're flattened again and I hope the city's plan is not to just replace them every month, but to actually fix the problem. And I realized that you are, the staff is quite busy. So a friend and I are volunteering to actually fix the, the turn onto Hillcrest. My friend has the core drill, we can, we can move that. We would make it the same width as the, the turn going north on Hillcrest, which is eleven feet. Ten feet, by the way, which is the minimum, is the same width as a parking spot, which I think is really pushing the, the limit of what is appropriate for a, a turn. Anyway, so that's, that's my offer. I understand you're busy and, and I, and a friend will, are volunteering to fix the problem so that you don't have to worry about that anymore. You might say you're not, you're concerned about whether or not we can do it well enough. Well, we will show you the plans and I'm sure that we can do it at least as well as the city. Thank you.
Next speaker is Donna Caban. Donna, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Donna Caban. On June twenty-sixth, the city council will consider a new airport development policy. At the June fifth Airport Commission hearing, the airport staff noted a hundred and twenty emails were submitted as part of the public comment period. What happened to those a hundred and twenty emails? None of the emails received were printed. The airport staff said they only answered emails that were relevant. Who decided which emails were relevant? This answer is unacceptable. This policy is coming before the city council without sufficient public input. I respectfully, respectfully request that all hundred and twenty emails be printed and responded to in the city packet for the twenty-sixth. I also request that you reopen the public comment period to ensure the process meets sequel requirements for public engagement. A thirty-day continuance would also be advisable to ensure adequate noticing of residents who live near the airport. The new policy fails to address any noise concerns. The noise impacts from so-called quieter newer jets are not consistent with the general plan noise limits for the city of Dublin, Livermore, Pleasanton and Alameda County general plan. An airport development policy cannot be inconsistent with general noise, general plan noise limits. Further, the city initiative provision directly conflicts and is inconsistent with Airport Resolution twenty-ten. Next, the continued use of unleaded aviation fuel at the airport directly conflicts and is inconsistent with Policy one point two objectives, which states the policy must include features to minimize adverse impacts on the environment. The policy does not address significant new information concerning the use of leaded aviation fuel near schools. Please see twenty-twenty-one studies by Santa Clara County and Kaiser Permanente. This could directly impact schools in Livermore and at Rancho Elementary and New Horizons Preschool and Pleasanton Schools in the Fairview area. This in new information could have significant impacts to hundreds of residents. There are many possible conditions and mitigations that should be added. A continuation is necessary to ensure adequate public engagement, a clear transition to unleaded aviation fuel and to address many other problems with this new policy. Thank you.
And a final speaker in the chambers is Tashina Pearson.
Pearson. And I received an email from the director of community. So I had a speech done, but he kind of made some comments in his email that weren't true. My issue is regarding a wall that was built on our property in nineteen seventy-one. The wall was built illegally, it's two feet from my garage. So now the wall is fifty years old. I had a structural engineer look at the wall and he stated that the wall is, it was built illegally. It's not the size that it should be for it to be six feet high. And it's already leaning. He said it's going to fall if there's an earthquake. Your director said that the city has enforced all city codes violations. I went to arbitration because they're treating this as a neighbor dispute and it's not a neighbor dispute because the wall was built by the developer illegally and was never permitted. And so when we went to arbitration, I'm not sure if you guys have my packets here, but there is a testimony, sworn testimony from Phil, who is your city employee, that stated that they never researched any of the wall, any violations regarding the wall. They've only looked at the height of the wall and not any of the location or the location or the condition. Because right now it has no footing, I can actually stick something underneath the wall to go to the other side. And like I said, it's, it's one point five feet from my gas meter and two feet from my garage and it's leaning. So what I would like is for the city to enforce the building code, to have someone come and look at the wall, look at the condition of the wall, not the height, but the condition of the wall. And if it's supposed to be removed, which I, I know it is supposed to be removed, but I would like some, someone to enforce the building code department to look at this wall and the violations that it has. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I believe we'll, if you could leave your contact information with Mr. Spence.
Okay. Also, I get the email from you.
That's the final speaker, Mayor.
It's my speaker. Okay, very good. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the open forum and move on to five point O. This is the consent calendar and I think five point O to
Excuse me, Mayor, we're going to reorder the agenda.
I was going to, I was going to do the consent calendar first and then we'll do six point three.
Item six point one has to go before this consent calendar.
And Mr. Mayor, the reason for it is there's a consent item that has to be heard after the public hearing. We messed this up for you. So sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm just not used to working from a script. So, okay, so that, we will do six point one.
And Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this is your City Manager, Mariana Marashova. While staff is getting ready, I'll introduce the presenter, Debbie Salgado, Civil Engineer in Community Development Department. I'll introduce the presenter, Debbie Salgado, Civil Engineer in Community Development Department.
Mayor, you do have a bit of a speaking role prior to the presentation.
Sorry. Oh. Okay, this is the time and place for the public hearing for the Community Facilities District number two zero two three dash one, the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan Services. The hearing is to inquire into the formation uh of the district, the formation of a future annexation area for the district, which will allow for more efficient annexation of parcels into the district and the levy of special taxes for municipal services in the district. Uh, before I formally open the hearings, are there any property owners or registered voters in the district or future annexation area who wish to file written protests? If so, they must be filed with the city clerk now. Are there any protests? Okay, this hearing is now open. I will have presentations first by staff uh about the district, the future annexation area, and the rate and method of apportionment of special tax. After that, we will receive comments and questions and any oral protests from any interested persons. When all the comments have been received, the hearing will be closed. Staff presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, we are conducting a public hearing for the Formation of Community Facilities District twenty twenty three dash one, the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan Services. Community Facilities Districts are a type of assessment district that provides a funding mechanism for cities and counties to collect funds for new development infrastructure or maintenance. Property owners are assessed based on their proportionate share for either construction or maintenance. I'm sorry. Got a little head myself. Property owners are assessed based on their proportionate share for either construction or maintenance, depending on the level of benefit that the property receives from the improvements. Community Facilities District twenty twenty three dash one will provide funding for maintenance of public amenities within the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. The boundary of the CFD shown here in blue coincides with the boundary of Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan area. The first zone to be assessed within the CFD will be De novo Homes tract eight six zero nine shown here in red. De novo Homes is a hundred and twelve unit condominium project located on North Canyon's Parkway at Triad Place. De novo Homes was conditioned to participate in a CFD to maintain their pro-rata share of Isabel Neighborhood's Pacific Plan amenities. To fulfill this obligation, De novo Homes has submitted a petition to the city to initiate formation of the CFD. Each unit within the first zone will be assessed approximately four hundred and thirty dollars annually. Future developments within the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan will be conditioned to annex into the CFD and pay their fair their fair share of the maintenance costs. The special amenities to be maintained within the Isabel Neighborhood Pacific Plan to be um by the CFD include the following. Enhance neighborhood streets, neighborhood parks, plazas and trails, and a Valley Link Plaza and parking lot. Staff recommends the city council adopt two resolutions, one to form the CFD and adopt and one to call for the CFD election. Then take a break to conduct the election and then adopt a resolution declaring the results of the CFD election. And finally, to introduce an ordinance to levy the special tax within the CFD. This concludes staff presentation. We are available for questions together with our consultants that are um joining us by Zoom, Chris Lynch of Jones Hall and Nick Dehoff from NBS Government Finance Group.
Right, uh, this is the time and place for uh uh the public hearing, and uh the hearing is now open. Thank you for the presentation, and uh are there comments, questions, or protests from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And now, uh, are there comments or questions from the council? Vice Mayor.
Um, I just wanted a clarification. Uh, a couple slides back, it said what the CFD would pay for. Um, are those possibilities of what they would pay for, or I I just see pedestrian bridge tunnel crossing at Isabel. Um, and I just want to make sure that if we're promising that on a in a public forum, that that actually happens versus us being clear that it's a maybe, that is just what I want an answer on. Is it a potential thing, or are we promising a tunnel slash bridge crossing?
It's one of the items that was specified in the specific plan to be included as part of all the amenities for the neighborhood.
And and we are planning for that improvement.
Okay, I just don't want someone to come back two years from now and say this slide said we were gonna have a thing if it was just a maybe. So thank you for clarifying that, um and that's all I had.
Okay, Councilmember Barantos.
Yeah, about the Valley Link, I was that a given, like, you know, Bart was once upon a time. Are they gonna, you know, with the funding right now, the state's freaking out about funding and well, all Bart, everybody's worried about it. And it sounds like it's a one-year fix from the governor and the state legislature. And I'm concerned about the funding, whether Valley Link's gonna be a, you know, pie in the sky thing there and telling people, oh, you're gonna get Valley Link. You know, when? When? I guess we're all gone. It's a nice idea, but I'm wondering whether it will come true. And we're promising people that, thinking, I know they get the tunnel, but will they get the train? The parking lot, I'm sure we can get, and the plaza will get, but will be there via train? And that's my concern, thinking about what Mrs. Science said about uh transit. And David, we're gonna build it, a little tiny one?
So so we are planning for train. Uh, the question i- is more likely about timing of the funding. Uh, obviously, uh, that timing will will ultimately affect the deliverable date of Valley Link itself. But um we have a number of community partners and agencies that are working hard on that project, and Livermore is is doing its share. Um, but as I said, the the timing of available funding ultimately will affect the delivery of the train.
Uh, just a quick question about the fees for the CFD. Is I believe the fees are per unit. Is there any possibility of changing that to a square footage or assessed value for that, or will it be consistently per unit throughout the entire CFD?
So the way we set up the CFD is that each uh development will be charged a uh per acre basis and then split amongst the units that will be um built on that particular parcel.
Okay, so a denser uh the denser building would have a lower per unit cost.
That's correct.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Carling, questions, comments, okay. Um, right, we may now consider and adopt two resolutions, a resolution of formation of a Community Facilities District and future annexation area, which will establish the district and the future annexation area. And also a resolution calling special landowner election uh for a Community Facilities District, uh, which will call for a the property owner vote uh to approve the special tax and the appropriations limit for the district. Any comments or questions, or do I have a a motion for the resolutions?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Uh, motion made by Vice Mayor Kick, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barantos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Okay, thank you. It's I. Uh, so we've adopted the resolution. Now, will the clerk please open the ballots for this election and announce the result of the property owner's vote?
Mayor, one ballot was received. The ballot represents five votes, and it was voted in favor of the ballot measure. As a result, there are five yes votes and zero no votes, and the ballot measure passes.
Okay, the record shows that uh at least two thirds of the property owner votes are in favor of the levy of the special taxes and the establishment of the appropriations limit. Uh, we may now proceed with the final actions for the district, which is a consideration of a resolution declaring the results of the special landowner election and directing recording of a notice of special tax lien, uh, which will declare the results of the election and direct the city clerk to record the notice of special tax lien and introduction and waiver of a full reading of an ordinance levying the special taxes in the district. After its introduction, this ordinance will be considered for adoption at our June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three meeting. So do we have a motion for approval to adopt the resolution declaring results of the special landowner election and directing the recording of the special of the notice of the special tax lien and further the introduction of ordinance by title only and waive further reading of the ordinance levying the special tax within the Livermore Community Facilities District number twenty twenty three dash one.
I'm not gonna try to repeat all of that, but so
That's why I took the lead on it.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Branning.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Barantos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. Okay, this completes tonight's proceedings for the district. Uh, and now moving on to uh the consent calendar. These are items which we finally got there. Uh, these are items that are fairly routine in nature and are typically passed with a single motion. Is there anyone uh from the public or on the council would like to uh speak to any of the items on the consent calendar?
I'll move approval.
Okay.
We do have one speaker, Mayor.
Oh.
Sorry, just one moment.
Oh, we have somebody uh uh online.
We do have uh Jean King over Zoom.
Okay.
Ms. King, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, this is Jean King. I thank the city and the developer for integrating twenty-two units of low-income housing for this for-sale development. This is five point nine, the low-income housing agreement uh for sale development and not providing in-lu payments. These twenty-two units will be for sale to median and moderate income households. It is important to integrate our income communities and not segregate low-income residents in separate areas. The Isabel Specific Plan requires rental housing to include all four categories of very low, low, median, and moderate income affordable housing. It would be good if this area and future areas would include all four categories in both rental and for-sale housing and be integrated in each development. I have a couple questions. Why are very low and low incomes not included in for-sale units? Are there no very low and low-income applicants that would qualify? Is there a difference in the expenses of the different levels of affordable housing to the city or to the developer? Is it the city responsibility and and um funds because of the requirement of a promissory note in favor of the city in the amount equal to the difference between the fair market value and the appraisal of the affordable unit as listed on page six, item eight of Exhibit A for this item? Would having the in-lu fees higher encourage more actual units and less in-lu payments? The in-lu fee for a unit here is approximately two hundred and nine thousand dollars, which is not the cost of building a unit, but the difference between the fair market value and the appraisal of the affordable unit. Thank you for listening to me and thank you for your concerns.
Mayor, that was the final speaker.
Uh, I will, can you close the public comment?
Pardon me? Okay, yeah. Okay, I will close the public comment. Uh, do we have uh um an answer for uh for Ms. King?
So I can answer at least some of her questions. I didn't take down everything, but um the city requires a twenty percent affordability in the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan area at median and moderate. Uh, in other portions of the city, we require fifteen percent, and we do include low income in that component. It ends up being about the same cost, very, it is the same cost to the developer um at Isabel and at other other portions of the city. So you're getting a slightly higher percentage of affordability, but you're not getting the depth of affordability. That was a decision that was uh made when the plan was adopted. Uh, apartment units at Isabel do have that uh lower income component. And where we are working on development agreements, such as at Harridge, we're trying to encourage additional low income in those projects as well.
I think she also wanted to know about where they're placed within the development so that they're not segregated.
Uh, our ordinance does require them to be uh dispersed throughout the project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
Now I'll move approval.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion made by uh Vice Mayor Kick, seconded by Councilmember Branning. Discussion of the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barantos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. Okay, as I said, I'm going to move uh item six point three to uh uh the to to now, so uh ahead of six point two.
Honorable Mayor Marshawn and members of the City Council, this is once again your City Manager, Mariana Marasheva. Uh, thank you, Mayor, for moving up this item and accommodating staff. Um, the item is going to be presented by Teresa Dilavega, Management Analyst in the Innovation and Economic Development Department. And we will have the presentation up shortly.
My mic. Uh, the Greenville Community Charging Depot.
And while we're getting the slides ready, the um presentation and the request to councils to approve the development agreement um and not the project itself. Next slide. The proposed site is located at one five one Greenville Road, and the size is approximately four point four acres along Greenville Road and about a block away from its intersection with Los Vasitas Road. The site is in our heavy industrial or I three zone. This industrial proposal, known as the Greenville Community Charging Depot, proposes to construct an electric vehicle charging infrastructure for semi-trucks for both overnight and daytime charging. Staff has determined that the project has the potential to help with the implementation of the city's climate action plan strategies to foster new green business and is aligned with the city's economic development strategies to help facilitate innovation and startups. In addition to payment of the estimated fees, this project requires public improvements, including widening of Greenville Road. These requirements take time. The applicant has requested a development agreement to provide flexibility with the timing and funding of required public improvements associated with this project. The development agreement's purpose is to provide that flexibility. The key development agreement parameters for the negotiation will be around securing the terms and timing for the financing of off-site public improvements. Staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with negotiating the terms of a development agreement with FM Greenville LLC or Forum. The development agreement will be considered by council at a future date. And authorization to negotiate does not constitute approval of the project nor of the development agreement. This concludes our presentation. Staff is available for questions and also joined by Economic Development Manager Andy Ross.
Do you have any public comment?
No comments have been received.
Okay, in that case, I'll uh close the public hearing, bring it back to the uh to the council. Council, any questions or comments? Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I have a question. It's mostly to extend it from twelve to twenty-four months, right? To allow them to secure funding in it.
Uh, the term of the DA hasn't been decided yet, but it's really to secure the funding needed for the widening of Greenville Road.
Okay.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Kick. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Varyantos.
Aye.
Councilmember Branning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kick.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. Okay, moving on to uh, the hearing to consider the Development Code Amendment uh, twenty-two dash zero zero four, which is the temporary uh, sign standards for the public right-of-way.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, while our speaker is getting ready, I'll introduce him. Uh, Jake Potter, uh, Associate Planner with Community uh, Development Department is going to present item six point two.
Evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, tonight we'll be discussing uh, temporary sign standards in the public right-of-way. So by way of background, uh, the prior standards allowed for commercial and non-commercial signs uh, throughout the right-of-way. Um, as the graphic shows on the screen, both at intersections and along the lengths of the street. The previous standards did differentiate between non-commercial and commercial signs, where non-commercial signs were allowed within sixty days of an event, whereas commercial signs were allowed on Thursdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. Beginning in twenty twenty, the City Council began to receive complaints about vandalism uh, and about um, you know, issues with temporary uh, non-commercial signs throughout the city. And the Planning Commission and the City Council took a range of actions um, throughout the last couple of years that culminated in this past November of twenty twenty-two, where the City Council adopted standards to ban um, all temporary signs, both non-commercial and commercial, within the public right-of-way. And the City Council also voted to delay the enforcement of that ban until July first of this year. And so if the City Council takes no action this evening, uh, that particular ban will be in effect as of July first. Council also directed staff to return prior to that date with alternative standards. And since that time, staff has researched federal court cases, has researched um, other standards from nearby cities, um, and also conducted targeted outreach uh, for, with the real estate community. And based on that information, staff developed um, a new set of proposed standards um, that provide a middle ground between the prior standards and the full ban. Um, as shown on the screen again by the graphic, the proposed standards would allow for temporary signs, both commercial and non-commercial, at intersections of two city streets from Thursday to Monday. Uh, more specifically, it's important to note that these standards would not modify uh, private property standards, so temporary signs would continue to be allowed on private properties. Um, and they would not modify the downtown specific plan standards. So the A-frame signs that commercial businesses get in the downtown, the banner signs over Fourth Street and Livermore Avenue would remain. And again, specifically, um, outside of the downtown specific plan, the commercial and non-commercial sign standards would be unified, um, easing enforcement operations. And signs would be allowed again at intersections of city streets from seven AM Thursday to eight AM Monday. Um, stake signs or A-frame signs would be allowed, which are your typical campaign signs and typical real estate signs. And there'd be a four-square-feet limitation with two signed copies per intersection. Staff's also proposing to include new enforcement provisions, where we would collect a twenty-dollar fee per sign to allay some of the costs of storage and enforcement. Um, and we'd also ensure that uh, private parties had ten days to pick up their signs before disposal. So ultimately, the new standards uh, would continue to allow for uh, public speech in the public right-of-way. Would continue to allow for commercial signs like real estate signs um, and like garage sale signs in the public right-of-way. Uh, would respond to questions of vandalism and aesthetics by concentrating signs at city intersections. Um, and would also create content-neutral standards to reduce the city's legal exposure. Uh, it's for those reasons that Planning Commission and City Council, um, or Planning Commission and staff recommend the City Council adopt a resolution finding the project to be exempt from CEQA and introducing an ordinance approving the project. Concludes, concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. First comment is Michael Godfrey, followed by Trish Monroe, followed by John Stein.
Wee.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Marshawn and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council. When this discussion came up, I guess in December, um, we were alarmed and um, we uh, actually had comments to the Planning Commission regarding what we thought would be reasonable input on uh, a new sign ordinance. And what staff has recommended and what we just heard is very acceptable to the real estate community um, as it's proposed, um, at least for now. So um, appreciate the comments and um, hope that the council will adopt the standards put forth by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Next speaker is Trish Monroe, followed by John Stein, followed by David Stark.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, uh, staff. I'm just calling, I'm, I'm, I'm just up here to say that I kind of like the old standards, the, the one that's, that, that would, would, the, the standards that would, were approved by the previous City Council that would go in to effect on July first should no other action be taken. And the reason for that really has to do with my concern over the environmental impact. It's actually two things, environmental impact and the amount of divisiveness that political signs cause. Um, the environmental impact simply, I think, can't be ignored. Um, the divisiveness is something that's been growing, and it takes away from the uh, ability to actually have conversations about what it means to be an elected official. Um, I understand that there's lots of other reasons. We've just heard from them. I understand the impact to the, to, to the real estate community. Frankly, I think that there's other ways that can, that can, that in other communities where these signs just don't appear. Um, I think we need to be looking at where, what works for creating community and what works for sustainability going forward. And so with that, um, I urge you to leave the uh, previous standards in place. Thank you.
Next speaker is John Stein, followed by David Stark.
John Stein, thirteen thirty-four Cathy Court. Uh, the basic uh, reason for this change was the last election. Historically, we had a, a tradition of signs, political signs appearing for approximately a month before the election. Because of changes, uh, the last election, the signs started appearing in all, or early August and uh, carpeting the city. I think that was due to the, the increased funding for city elections. Um, I generally support the sign ordinance and the staff recommendation. I also support participatory democracy. One minor change I would recommend for the, from the staff recommendation, and that is that the requirement for the Thursday through Monday uh, signs be suspended for the month of October. Uh, there are a number of uh, reasons for that. One is that the first-time candidate needs a name recognition and generally has a limited budget and limited volunteers. And the requirement that the signs be removed and replaced would place an unfair burden on, you know, people who are running a small campaign. Not only city council elections, but also school board elections, uh, art district elections, and even Zone Seven. I would urge that to level the playing field, uh, that particular requirement be removed for the month of October. And uh, that would allow first-time uh, candidates some re, uh, name recognition. And uh, it does avoid the carpeting of the city with, you know, somebody with unlimited funds of putting signs in every tree well along major streets. Um, but I think that uh, uh, the first-time candidate who has a limited budget, a few volunteers to sell, you know, would be an unfair burden, having to take down the signs and put them up. Uh, for people with a large budget, they can hire someone to do it, but uh, first-time candidates, uh, really, it is an unfair burden. Uh, so in order to encourage participation in the political process, I would urge again that the requirement for the Thursday through Monday requirement be removed for the month of October. Thank you.
The final speaker is David Stark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. I'm David Stark. I represent the Bay East Association of Realtors. First, I want to thank the uh, the efforts of staff and the Planning Commission. This is a very complicated issue. And unfortunately, we, you all are going to have to do something. Um, as, as staff illustrated in the, in the staff report and as your planning commission debated um, ad nauseam almost. It was probably one of the most erudite meetings I've attended in almost twenty years of public presentation. Uh, this is a very complicated, both uh, philosophical and legal issue. And you will need to be making a decision. Unfortunately, the rules that you had, um, as staff is, has articulated, um, they're not going to work. This is an issue of contrast. Uh, one of the contrasts is you have this huge issue about campaign signs highly visible. At the same time, in that shadow, there are a lot of temporary signs that, as acknowledged by your staff and your planning commission, aren't causing problems. Real estate open house signs are an example of signs that aren't causing problems. Um, garage sale signs, which are soon to be illegal, if you don't take action quickly, are not causing problems. So it's this contrast between something that's very highly visible and emotional and something that really has been off the radar screen for years. The other contrast is timing. We know that the, the next big thing that's going to trigger this issue will be the election um, coming up in about a year and a half. Well, there's also something coming up July first, um, that could make a whole bunch of signs that aren't causing problems illegal. Um, as, as much as we'd like to, things to go back to the way they were, um, you can't. We also understand um, that you're probably going to have a lot of discussion about this tonight. While we do support the ordinance that's proposed by staff and vetted and approved by your planning commission, if you can't take action on that ordinance tonight, at least push back the ban that will take effect July first. Give yourselves more time to work on this. Don't criminalize signs that haven't been causing problems while you do more work on this. And, and we understand that you may not have the capacity to enforce that ban. But I can't in my conscience tell our members that there's a ban in effect, but don't worry about it. It's not going to be enforced. Um, this is going to be a tough issue. We understand that. Um, you can't go back to where you were. You got to make a decision. If you need more time, push back that ban. I'm going to sit right there. If uh, you choose to workshop this thing and you have some more comments or questions, uh, it's as far as the, where the Realtor community is, I'm going to sit right there and I'm happy to come up and, and share any perspectives if you have any questions. And again, thanks to staff and your planning commission. They have been workshopping this thing for more than six months, and they did some great work. Thank you.
That was the final speaker, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and uh, bring it back to the uh, to the council. Vice Mayor, you were heading for your, your button there, like you were going to say something.
Yeah, I, I have some questions for staff. Before November, was it November, December? Before November, um, our standards were not content neutral. Not content neutral opens us up to a higher li, uh, higher liability potential for um, litigation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, so wh- what I am seeing in the proposal and, and I, I was, I was actually not here that day. I was up there. My kids were sick, as per usual. Um, I, that conversation I remember pushing for, okay, maybe we can't all come to agreement right now, but let's maybe come back. Maybe there's some magic bullet um, that other cities have done. Um, and based on the information and based on the presentation, it seems like we are kind of making up another of our own rules. It's not necessarily a standard best practice that all other cities um, in, in California or in the country are um, are following. And what I'm hearing is that we're, although the ordinance that we are, you have in front of us might say that it's content neutral, doesn't feel content neutral. Content neutral wouldn't, um, we wouldn't have multiple representatives from um, the real estate agencies in support, and we wouldn't have people talking about political signs. This isn't about whether it's a political sign or whether it's real estate. I, for me, this is about um, being in alignment with the goals we set as a city as a whole. So we have multiple documents that we're supposed to have an alignment and follow. One is our general plan. Um, one is our climate action plan, one is our transit plan, and something I've been an advocate for over and over again is making sure that we're following those rules consistently throughout. I do not feel that this ordinance for allowing these temporary signs is following our goals of being a leader in climate action. For that reason, although I think it will be different and frustrating, I would like to see a total ban stay in effect um, on July first or go into effect on July first. Um, and my last question to staff is, are other cities in California, do they have total bans on temporary signage?
Yes, they do.
Do those cities sell homes?
I would presume so.
Okay. I, I'm not, I, I just want us to think really clearly that something that feels scary might have felt scary for that city too at first, but I believe very strongly that we are adaptable, um, and that, and that our, our very intelligent people in the city will, will figure it out while adapting um, to our climate action plan because I, I don't think we should be making rules based on one industry's uh, preference when it doesn't align with our overall goals of the community. So um, I will let my other council members uh, give their opinions.
Councilmember Carling.
Yeah, thanks. And thanks for the folks that uh, have spoken tonight. I just, we're going to ask the question in a slightly different way than my colleague, the Vice Mayor. Is there, can we make different rules for commercial and non-commercial signs?
Yes, you can, but the commercial standards can't, you can't privilege commercial speech over non-commercial speech. That is, you can't allow for more commercial speech than non-commercial speech.
Not sure how I would do that. Do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, so we, we, staff's explored, you know, close to fifteen different options. Um, you know, it is kind of a challenge. Um, and I think that is why, you know, some communities choose a ban, but others um, choose kind of a similar path that we did where you limit uh, signs to certain days of the week. There are other alternatives that would be content neutral whereby you could allow for signs during certain months of the year, um, you know, or, or times. Those are content neutral, um, but could still allow for different types of signs.
All right, well, um, so Vice Mayor and I were on the last council. I didn't agree with her then, but I think I agree with, I'm sure I agree with her now. Because I, I also recognize what Mr. Stein said, that this was all about the last campaign. And it's too bad that it occurred the way that it did. I'm very sympathetic to the realtor, real estate community, and I appreciate Mr. Stark and Mr. Godfrey being here. But I don't see a way out. And because my concerns about campaign signs are the following, is one is, again, Mr. Stein brought it up, is that some people will have enough money to be able to put signs out whenever they want to, every week. And we've seen that in this community where there are a few wealthy people that are willing to spend a lot more money than other candidates to try and get their candidate elected. to try and get their candidate elected. And so I think that that's an unfair burden on some of the smaller campaigns. And so I think in fairness, no signs would be a benefit there. I also am worried about the enforcement. And I, I think the city staff has got playing on their plates and not have to go running around all, every week and picking up signs. And I don't think the penalty or the fine for that is enough to actually discourage somebody from leaving a sign up longer than they should. So I just worry about the city staff running around in their cars adding to the greenhouse gas inventory more than they need to. And lastly, again, getting back to the climate action plan, I, Councilmember Banan, I spent weeks and months putting that together and for us to announce this, allow signs to go up every week and expect people to be running around in their vehicles, again, contributing to the greenhouse gas inventory, I think is a big mistake. And furthermore, these signs, these plastic signs, the plastic campaign signs are not recyclable. They're just going to be added to the landfill. So as much as I was against the proposal in the last council, I'm going to, I would hope that we can allow the current proposal or ordinance or whatever it is to go into effect July 1st.
I don't have much to add. I think, thanks staff for all the work they did on looking for alternatives, but I do think that the proposed alternative is too complex and I would also support either taking no action or I would vote no on the current proposals.
Mr. Rubriantos?
Okay, I think it comes down to the last campaign signs. And then I have, I side with Mrs. Stein. I think one, the incumbents who are in office will have a leg up. You know, and the name of the game is getting your name out there whether you like it or not. And Willie Round has campaign manager. He ran state campaigns all the way to the state. His thing was ten. And that was the Kirby method. Get the name out there 10 times. Doesn't matter. It's by signs, by mailers, whatever. Just get it out there 10 times. And by the time the person sees it 10 times, they'll vote for that person. And they won't even know what they, why. They'll just know the name. So right now the incumbents have the name, they have a leg up. And then two, it's, it's name recognition. And I had a little history on signs. I knew name recognition is a big, big important thing because before it used to be in the ballot, if your name starts with A, you got the first rung on the ballot. And that usually got a chunk of votes automatically because the way people vote. A lot of people aren't into the campaign. And when I was running going door to door, a lot of people didn't even know the campaign. There's a campaign coming, election? When? Oh, November. And I think the campaign signs all of a sudden wakes them up. Oh, there's a campaign coming. Maybe I should think about it and maybe vote for somebody that I think is qualified or good enough. And then you know, then that means if you can't put campaigns on, that you got to go to mailers. It's 5,000 bucks for one district if you want to hit all the people in your district. If you're running a Democratic local campaign, you can target. But a mailer from the mayor, you have to do district statewide. It's a ton of money. I, I, I didn't, I didn't go through my whole district because I didn't want to spend that much money. I just hit about a third of my district with a mailer. Because they don't know me by now, my door knocking and my signs, then forget it. Yeah, I'm not going to get the election. So, and I think it comes down to the first amendment. I think it's right for people to put your name out there. And so what if a sign or two or three or 20 disappear? I put them back up. I had reserves. I lost one, put them back up. And you whine about a sign going down. Okay, if you're worried about plastic signs, then make a requirement. Your sign has got to be recyclable. Just like Mrs. King showed that hardly anybody's following the recycling things around here with the take home containers. They're all, you know, I give up on what to put in a container or not. It has a little V, a little triangle. It doesn't mean a thing. So straws, still plastic, a lot of them. So worried about recycling all that, just then jump on that and get on those people to start doing the right thing with that. So the thing is, I, I don't like the idea. I think Mrs. Stein's right. We should, if anything, I'll come 45 days before the election. It gives 15 days for the signs to come out before the, the first ballot mailing ballot hits your house. So by then people will have their signs out 15 days. And I know the proposal to put a sign up and then take down at night. Yeah. I like to see the mayor running around putting up signs and taking them down every night. You'd have to have an army out there. And maybe a little army, but not that big of an army. And so I, I'm, I, I think it's wrong. I think it's wrong for to stop campaign signs because you're afraid you're losing some signs and you're afraid by recycling, make them all recyclable. And I'm sure people will make recyclable signs. The market calls for it. This way our capitalist society works for if people want recycled, then they'll, we'll find a way to get it to them. I kept all my mental stakes. If someone's going to run next time in two years, I'd say, hey, I got 106. You want them? I'll recycle them to you. Anyway, I'm really against this. I, I don't know why it came up because people were whining about signs disappearing. If you have never, mostly have never run a campaign, it's not fun. It's hard. I, I, well, I thought it was fun because I liked meeting the people. But, you know, and I wasn't concerned about losing the signs, one or two. Or I didn't lose them anyway. I didn't take any down either. I even put some MyPhonos signs back up and I turned them down. So I'm, I really, really don't like this. I, I think that gets a first amendment. I don't care what city does it. You know, we could do follow Florida and do what they do. You know, they do a lot of crazy stuff. Just because some cities say, okay, no more signs around here, doesn't mean we have to do it. We can modify, go 45 days. And if you want to take them, if they're in the wrong place, take them down. But you know, that also puts some nefarious people out there. We'll take your sign down and nail it to a tree and then you get fined for it. So let's see it happen. Anyway, I'm really against this. I'd like to see amendments to do 45 days and, and keep everything else away. The Realtors, I'm not worried about them. They put their signs up and take them down. Because it does cost money to lose those signs. They don't like losing their signs. But that's my thing. Okay, it's my opinion.
Thank you. So we've heard a lot of comments about that. We got a lot of emails. First, let's say this is not about democracy. Not at all. This isn't about freedom of speech. What this is about, it's about reducing urban blight, visual blight in the landscape. And it's about reducing impacts on staff. That's what we're talking about here. Freedom of speech. You could just drive down the street and throw flyers out your car. And you get your name all over the place. But that's, it's the same thing. We're talking about littering the landscape with, with people's names. And I, yeah, I, I, I really struggled on this one because I put out a lot of signs in my day. But then again, I've also been on campaigns, winning campaigns that didn't put out a single sign. But the person was qualified and, and they won. The fine, it might do something to recoup some of the costs, but again, it was, we're talking, in an ideal situation, we wouldn't be dealing with bad players. And yet in the last campaign, we had a lot of vandalism. The campaign before that, there was a lot of vandalism. But some really interesting stuff where people were taking my signs and replacing them in illegal places. After the campaign was over, I had gone through neighborhoods and cleared out my signs. And a week later, my signs were back up again. I didn't put them there. Somebody else did. So if you're talking about having fines, you got, you have some bad, bad players out there and that could significantly adversely impact a campaign if you had people out there deliberately misplacing signs. And that's been my experience. I started thinking about, gee, if we had, if we changed the hours. But then again, as my colleagues up here on the council are saying, that, that becomes a logistical nightmare. And the impacts on staff. And I'll go back to the first thing I said. What are we trying to accomplish? We're trying to reduce visual urban blight and reduce impacts on staff. And I, I thought about using perhaps the Citizens Police Academy alumni. And, and they could, they could do some of the lifting on that, but, but they're also busy on other things that are involved in our community. What are the alternatives as far as what do the voters do? They could read the voter pamphlet. You know, they could do a little bit of research. Take a little bit of effort. I don't think that anybody's been elected by the number of signs they had. The last election we had, the person that had the most signs and the most illegally placed signs didn't win. And yet their name was all over this community. So just because you have the most signs doesn't mean that you're going to win. It requires the voters to actually do a little bit of, of effort. I am sympathetic to, to the Realtors. I've, I've got two brothers that are Realtors. And you know, impacts on that. How many houses are actually sold based on, on, on signs? You've got other issues where are these directional signs or are the advertisements along the public right of way? So this is, this is, is it's funny. It's, it's difficult, but it really shouldn't be. Because our goal is reducing visual blight. And we heard a lot of people in the last election complain about the, the visual blight throughout the community. And I think that there was a lot of wisdom in, in moving ahead with this climate action, as you pointed out, and as you did as well. I mean, you led the charge on climate action. So and you know what, Jake, I really appreciate the tremendous amount of effort that staff did on this. And I really appreciate the, the, the work that the planning commission did. And the planning commission really struggled with this, trying to, trying to, to create that balance. But again, looking at what's going to be, have the great, the best and greatest positive impact on the community. And I think that that's moving ahead with what we've got. So, but that in no way minimizes the tremendous effort that staff made. And I sincerely appreciate that. And the, the planning commission is watching. You guys did a yeoman's job on that as well. So, but again, it comes back to what is in the best interest of this community regarding to climate action, with regarding to visual blight? And, and some of the other intangibles. So I'll turn it back to the council. Is there anyone wishes to make further comments or a motion?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, we try not to do this. We try not to tell staff to do something and then be like, just kidding. We, we didn't need you to do that. So I, I do apologize as being one of the people that caused that problem. I just wanted to reiterate again that this is content neutral and our decision should be content neutral as we're up here. It's not about whether we like campaign signs or not, or whether we like real estate signs or not. It's about putting a piece of plastic and metal all over our city, whatever it has to say. And I think that the discussion about democracy and our, our communication about elections is a completely separate issue and that's Marie's purview. And I think that if her staff wants to come back with a recommendation on how to better communicate about elections, that's a completely separate agenda item that is not really related to this issue. So I just want people to remember this isn't, campaign signs are a topic, that this isn't really about campaign signs. This isn't really about real estate signs. This is a content neutral decision about plastic and metal in the public right of way. And to remind everyone that temporary signage on personal and business property is still allowed. So unfortunately, there will still be a production of plastic and metal all over our city. But we as a city, as a leader in climate action, should not be promoting more distribution of said plastic and metal. So just wanted to say those things again after, after some other comments were made. So that's all.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Certainly.
I still stand on what I said. And I don't care about the classic signs. I think we can make them paper. If I ran again, I would make sure they're biodegradable. Anyway, I appreciate what you did. I know you're throwing a hot potato by a couple of hot potatoes to deal with this thing. And just some, don't like what you, what it came up with doesn't mean I don't appreciate what you did. Okay. So I still don't like the idea. I think that it's going to hurt people in campaigns and in this camp, what, every four years or whatever, except for mayor, every two years. But, you know, I, I think Lincoln might be upset with this because I'm sure he had signs up and people chopped his signs down too. But a lot of signs have been around as part of the history of politics in our country.
Any further comments? Is anybody willing to make a motion? Okay, dies for lack of emotion. Thank you very much. Sincerely appreciate it. Again, please commend the staff that we sincerely appreciate the, the efforts that were made. 15 different iterations. Good heavens. Thank you. But as the, as I've said many times, it's the planning commission decides whether something can be done. It's the council's purview to decide whether it should be done. So thank you very much. And then commend my thanks to staff, staff as well. We, are there any matters for consideration?
I didn't do my report out.
Okay, you want to do that now?
Yeah, hold on. Let me check my notes really quick. I forgot to, being on summer break, I forgot to send it in. So yeah, I went to a few events in the last two weeks. So first of all, there was Livermoreum Day. It was absolutely wonderful event, well attended again as always. I was also able to attend the community town hall at RingCon. It was well attended, but I would have liked to see more people there. I think for the community around RingCon, we should really look into alternative ways of outreach or trying to get them out. I also attended a LAPT meeting. I know public transit was brought up in the meeting today and LAPT is working on trying to actually address some of the changes that are going to be coming with the BART system and how it affects us. But LAPT is in good shape looking forward for its financing, which is very nice for locally. I also was able to go to Livermore Rodeo and Parade. The rodeo was a ton of fun. The parade was great to seeing so many people out. Enjoying the weekend was just an absolute blast. And then I just kind of want to wrap up by congratulating all of our recent graduates from our high schools and our college and to wish everyone a very happy Pride Month.
Mr. Curly.
Yes, thank you. I see on the 24th, I participated in the Tri-Valley Cities Council Dinner where we got a legislative update from our lobbyists back in Washington as well as Sam Kegel from the League of California Cities. On the 25th, went to the State of the City Luncheon where the mayor gave a State of the City address. Very, very well done. On the 29th, I attended the Memorial Day Remembrance at Stockman's Park. I think one thing that park has brought to this community, I think, is the opportunity to remember those vets that have given their ultimate sacrifice in defense of this country. And it really is a nice place to do that. And I admire the statue that's put there and, and all the other parts of the Stockman's Park that make that. statue that's put there and and all the other parts of the Stockman's Park that make that up a great, great area. Mayor did a nice job there too, by the way. And he was also at Livermoreum Day, of course, on the 30th, again, a nice, great event. I participated in the town hall at the RingCon. As my colleague said, it's be nice to get a few more people out for these kind of things. I had a couple of Stop Waste meetings this, over the last couple of weeks. And I do want to point out on the 8th, one of the things the Recycling Board does with Stop Waste is gives out, recognizes certain members of the community that are contributing to improving the environment and stopping stopping waste either through recycling and so on. And two groups here in Livermore were honored at that meeting on Stop Waste. And I was, since I'm on the board, I had the privilege of making a few comments. So the two organizations were Fertile Groundworks. And so Brenda Kussler was there to receive that. Fertile Groundworks is out at Hasbury Methodist where they provide compost, as well as they have this community garden there providing fresh fruits and vegetables to those in need. And then the other recipient was Barnett Plumbing. You probably see their trucks running around. And Ben Foster VP was there to receive the award. And they got it for their innovation in terms of trying to promote heat pumps, water heater, heat pumps in residential homes. And oftentimes, two two challenges for people that want to switch to heat pumps. One is they're a little more expensive than a regular gas fired hot water heater. And secondly, you may need an electrical upgrade. So if you suddenly have a catastrophe like we've had at one point a couple of years ago, and we're quick to call Barnett, although we did not go to a I can't admit that I have a a heat pump for water heater. But what they will do is they'll actually bring in a quote, used water heater to replace the one that's now broken in your home. And while you work on the financial resources to to purchase a heat pump, as well as providing the appropriate electrical power to the heat pump. So they'll install this used one, if you will, to get you up and running again while you're working on the details of installing a a heat pump, a water heater heat pump. And I think this, and they were recognized for that innovation and clever idea. So they've already, I think, $170,000 worth of financing that they've been able to save people for installation of heat pumps for their hot water heaters. And then lastly, I do want to mention that I went to the rodeo parade. Again, a great event. And just a couple of things brought up by people. I guess we're going to follow through on that unsafe wall. Is that true? I know there was some comment about that. Is that right, Mr. Spence?
Staff has had communications with the property owner. And we don't believe there's additional action for the city to take at this time. If you'd like more information, we can provide it to you.
Okay. What's the news about East Avenue?
East Avenue, we've been doing analysis of the operations and we're looking to make some modifications here in the near future to adjust turning movements and go to a second phase. So we'll have some information on that.
You're not going to ask Mr. Burnham to get out there and run this cord drill, are you?
No, staff will handle it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, customer Barantos.
One thing I forgot to mention a while ago is that, if you don't know, I'm president of Livermore Life Club. Every year, we do an annual special kids event. And now it's over in Oakley at Freedom High School. And we have three, we had 425 kids sign up. These are kids from the Alameda County. And and they can come with their families and they're treated to like a carnival event. They get they get sugared out. And I'm also because one of the things our club is really well known for, every expects our club to be there, we serve root beer floats. So we serve 350 river floats. And so that's one of the things I want to mention that we had up almost on one to one ratio with lines showing up for the kids. But this, they get motorcycle rides and cotton candy, a lot of those have hot dogs, hamburgers and all that. It's all free. Okay, I did enjoy our mayor in action at the State of the City thing. I was very impressed. He'd be a good teacher too in high school, make it interesting. Anyway, so I enjoyed that. I was there. I did go to the Last Youth Commission. I was impressed with the kids and they had incoming group watching. It was the upcoming, it was outgoing, it was talking about their plan for us today. I did go on a rodeo parade. We were carefully driven around by Cody. He didn't get into a wreck with us on the wagon. And he said he'd be very careful, you know, because he knew the mayor was not there, so he would be extra careful with the rest of us. And I did go to a we also support Kenai Campaigns, Life Club. A friend of mine invited me to go to a fundraiser up in Santa Rosa. And they raised $200,000 in one night for dogs. And they had actual dogs that are already trained walking through the crowd, you know, all happy. And then a bunch of puppies are coming in. It takes $7,000 to train one dog to be trained to go guide a person. And the lady who presented was a teacher and she had three and twice dogs saved her life by one calling, getting a phone for her and bringing it to her. She can die 110. Another, she was hanging over the street. My dog pushed her head up so she can breathe. And she taught and she brought the dog to class. It's an elementary school she taught at. I did go to the Tour Lesure, that little bakery. I had to practice that. My wife's a French teacher. She made sure I said it right. And and they stopped their grand opening because I'm not sure you know Shaimin, the co-owner with Pearl, her mom was sick and she did pass away. So so I've been going there. If you haven't tried them, it's they're good pastries. It'll mess up your your, you have to go hit the treadmill for at least two hours. Which I don't have. Then the other thing it is, I did go to the town hall and I liked going there and meeting some of the people there. And I hadn't been to that playground a long time. I I used to teach summer school there in Maryland. And that fairytale was not there. It's a really impressive little playground there. And the parents that I saw, they really like it there. Then the other thing I did go down to Clovis to see my granddaughter, my wife's granddaughter, graduated from Clovis High School. And she sang the National Anthem. She knocked it out of the park. She did a really good job. And she was recorded and play it that way. You know, they do that games too. So in case, in case something happens, it still goes on. But she said, nope, you can do it. Right there. So she had to go out there and sing. And she did a real good job. And that's mine, end of mine.
Thank you very much. I was at the pardon me. Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't do my paperwork again. I'm sorry.
I'll look through this, but yes.
Yeah, no, I didn't. So on the 23rd, I was at the LAVTA Finance Committee. That would be May 23rd because it is June now. And on the 30th, I was at Livermoreum Day. Wednesday, the 7th, I was at the JP Board Meeting. And on Monday, the 5th, I was at LAVTA. That is what I have to report. Yes, that is everything that I did that I have to report. That is all.
Anything that you want to report?
Oh, I actually did have, this is not necessarily a matters, but a request for a memo. Could we, as there was conversation, that was about a certain content, could we have a memo about how candidates can communicate and have communicated in the past few elections? That is on the city side. So I know, for example, the first year ever, we had the candidates' websites on our city website was 2020, I believe. So that's information that maybe not everybody would know. So if we could have a public memo about how election information gets to the public, maybe that would answer some questions that that had come up. Not necessarily matters, but just a reminder for everybody. And I'm done.
Okay, very good. All right. As was reported, I was also at the State of the City address, which is a lot of fun. I do enjoy that. So I'd like to talk about my community. Also, a whole bunch of different stuff. We had the Alameda County Transportation Commission where they went over the Comprehensive Investment Plan expenditures, of which Livermore got nothing. But we will continue to have those conversations. Apparently, we didn't compete by their criteria. So we're sufficiently well. But we will continue to to work to bring additional funding into into Livermore and the Tri-Valley. Livermoreum Day was the first Livermoreum Day at Livermoreum Plaza on Livermoreum Day. It was epic. It was great. And also, on the 7th, I met with the members of the Leadership Team for TopCon Global Positioning Systems. They make software and hardware that'll allow these multi-ton graders to move earth within a centimeter. So it's it's pretty impressive. Heard about their future plans and some of the updates. 70% of TopCon's global business is here in Livermore and they manufacture here in Livermore. So we also talked about their needs to expand their campus. And one of the things that they do is they've got to drive these tractors and drive these graders around. So they've acquired land east of Greenville Road to perhaps use as a proving ground for agriculture. So those are ongoing discussions that we have to meet their needs because they need to expand. And they're already here in Livermore. So we're working on ways to help them help facilitate their their ongoing success. So with that, there being no further business coming to the kids, to the city. We adjourn to our next meeting, Monday, June 26, 7 o'clock, right here at the council chambers. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.